Bye.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for June 1st, 2020. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed persons and our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father of Charlie Brooks, the brother of Justin Delgado, husband of Elena Venezia, and those who have passed of COVID. We also then have a moment of reflection, those healthcare workers, first responders, and all essential personnel who are working tirelessly during this COVID-19 pandemic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which it stands: A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We're going to start with public comment. Yvette, did anybody send in public gender-related items only?
No, I'm sorry. No, no comments.
No comments? Okay. Ron, I'm going to turn it over to you then.
Thank you so much, Jackie. So before we get to the portion of our meeting that I most look forward to, which is our school partner recognition night, I do want to share just a few items. The budget vote is set for June 9th. Ballots must be received by June 9th at 5:00 p.m. Unfortunately, and it's not unique to Yorktown, many districts in our region have experienced a delay in having the ballots mailed out to their communities. So we're one of many. Our ballots right now are in white planes at the regional distribution center, due to come to Yorktown tomorrow morning and out in tomorrow's mail and Wednesday's mail. Again, that's what we're being told. We apologize for the delay, certainly not the way-
I see everyone, but I have no audio.
Oh, yes, you do. I hear you.
I hear anyone.
I mean, Yvette, can you mute Anthony's microphone and all the other mics, please? Thank you. So we apologize certainly for the inconvenience. It's, this was something that was mandated at the 11th hour for school districts. We're obviously doing our best to comply and we're to comply. The enormity of the ask with the executive order is something that at some point it just turns into just numbers. We had to send out 7,100 postcards, 15,000 absentee ballots, which go into 45,000 envelopes. That is a big undertaking for a school district. That's a big undertaking for any district, especially a district our size, to have to prepare them.
I'm working on it.
We are-
Thanks, Mike.
We are absolutely mindful of the time that voters have to turn around their ballots. We recommend returning it in the mail the day that you receive it if you intend to vote or to be assured that we receive the ballot in a timely manner. And we are asking the governor to extend the deadline to a June 9th postmark as opposed to a June 9 receipt date. So those ballots, for those who want to ensure that the ballots are received prior to that time, you're welcome to come to the central administration building, 2725 Crompond Road. There's a secure lockbox outside of the main entrance to the central administration building, and you can drop your ballot there where the area is under video surveillance, and we will be emptying the ballot boxes regularly. With, I do want to share something about the STAR program and the way that's changed. And there's a misunderstanding about the increase in property taxes. So I just want to share a clarification, a point of clarification. A year ago, you may recall that there were changes to the STAR program where new home buyers weren't going to automatically receive the STAR discount. They were going to pay the full price of property taxes and then receive a check equivalent to that STAR amount. So that went into effect, and now is, and the other is of a certain income bracket for those who are at the upper end of the threshold, who I forget what the number is at the lower extreme. They were not going to have the STAR discount automatically applied to their property taxes, but would receive a check. So property taxes on paper look like they have gone up by $2,000 or whatever the amount is, but an equivalent check was mailed home in that amount. And that explains the discrepancy in property taxes. In fact, the school district tax increase last year was a minimal amount, whereas the change in property taxes, though, seems excessive, and it's a function of changes to the STAR program. So I just wanted to share that, and that's honestly independent of the school district, but I did want to clarify that nonetheless. With regard to our school reopening, we're working hard at this in terms of coming up with a plan that's intelligent, a plan that's thoughtful, that makes sense, that accounts for all the different details. And I trust our community has confidence that our plan will be attentive to even the smallest detail. It will be mindful of best practice in education, be respectful of our students, be respectful of their families, and be respectful of our faculty and staff. So we are working through, we haven't received guidance yet. My understanding is that the governor's office will be sending guidance to us at some point this month. The Board of Regents will then be sending guidance to school districts at some point in July, mid-July, I believe, and then our plans are due in July. So we're working through all of the details behind the reopening of school. We've established task forces to focus on the instructional piece and the logistics piece. The instructional piece today, as it exists, will look different come September. My hope is that all the students are back and we're at full operating capacity come September. And all of our planning has been just to keep us prepared. I do want to share, we are winding down our school year. We're now in June, surprisingly enough. It's always amazing, every year, right? It's been 20 years and never gets old, that first day of June. So our remote learning continues. We are working through an end date with the state education department. We're awaiting guidance. There's some really, really important guidance that we need before we can determine an end date. I do want to share just some numbers and some facts with you. Over the last 30 days in our school district, so the 30-day period ending May 29th, there were 1.4 million emails exchanged in the district. There were almost 600,000 meeting minutes that took place with classrooms. There were almost 300,000 files uploaded to our servers. So it's actually, the exact number is 299,904 files. There were 7,500-plus Google Hangouts that took place with classes. So we've made some real strides. They're not always evident. They're not all evident. But I was astonished when I saw 1.4 million emails exchanged in the school district in the course of a 30-day period. This is not, this is not over an extended period. And certainly, the 577,000 meeting minutes were quite impressive. I was a little surprised by almost 600,000 meeting minute times. Now, with regard to the reopening, we'll have, we'll communicate more details. We are going to be thoughtful in our plan. And once we have something to start from, a construct, we will certainly share that with the community. We're mindful of all the details. We're mindful of, obviously, best practice instructionally. We're aware of that. I participated in an international call with some top educators from the UK, from Switzerland and from Israel to understand, because they're ahead of us in the reopening. They've reopened their schools. So I was on a great call to hear some of the best practices and some of the errors that they made in their reopening. So that was very enlightening. And we certainly will incorporate best practices into our strategy. Now, with that said, I do want to acknowledge now our wonderful school partners. They're such a great group. Welcome to our meeting for all of our school partners. I'm scrolling through and I'm seeing some of the familiar faces. It's wonderful to see you. This is a special evening for our district to be able to formally acknowledge and honor the outstanding work that so many of you have volunteered for our school district, albeit virtually. It's wonderful to be able to celebrate your contributions to the Yorktown Central School District. Your service is so appreciated. You give so many hours, so many hours to our schools, and we're so grateful. The William Arthur Ward quote that I often refer to, it's a touchstone for me in so many instances, is feeling gratitude and not expressing it is like wrapping a present but not giving it. So today and every day, honestly, we say thank you to our school partners. I do want to acknowledge each of the school partner groups. I saw so many on, but I do want to acknowledge, and if they want, they're able to unmute themselves if they want to just share maybe something that they were proud of or something that, any thoughts that have been on their mind, they're welcome to do that. In the moment, I just want to, at this point, honor, we'll start at the district PTSA level, right? So president and district and Mohansic. So there's two hats that Ron Fideli wears, well, many hats that Ron wears in our district. So I do want to acknowledge two of those hats as district PTSA president and Mohansic PTSA president. And Ron is not serving in the president capacity for the district PTSA next year. I do thank him for his service over these last two years. It's been wonderful to partner with him on so many different endeavors for the district. So Ron, thank you so much for all of your efforts.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hatter, and thank you to the Board of Education. First and foremost, I'm most proud of all the people that are on this screen. I'm proud of being able to work with them under such trying times, working with you, the school principals, the other PTA presidents. My specific board at the district level is Erin Robke. Lisa Bukalo is our treasurer, and Lori Kinsaga is our secretary. It's been wonderful to work with them for two years. I thank them immensely. And at the Mohansic level, it's Erin Robke again is our vice president. Corinne Lejudeis is our treasurer, Karen Sesney and my wife, Stephanie Fideli, are secretaries, and Dana Longi is our district delegate. So I just want to reiterate that the thing that I'm most proud of is that how we all came together, working, what a privilege it is to work in this district as a volunteer, the support that we have, and again, the commitment that we all have made. And as the days and the years and the weeks go by, you know, Maria O'Connell and I really came up with, as a joke, that it's PTA by committee, but that's really what it is. How many different texts, emails, back and forth to get things, you know, coordinated and to work with the school principals to try to make whatever we can do a little bit easier on the students in this time was wonderful. So we've done some challenges. We've done just emails to keep people posted, and again, to make it so that, you know, everyone can get through this together. And we are Yorktown strong. We're Mohansic strong.
Thank you. That is great. Absolutely. And Ron, thank you so much. And you referenced Maria. Maria, thank you so much. Maria is the incoming district PTSA president, so it's going to be wonderful to continue our work together in that regard. I'd like to pivot quickly to our next school honoree. I haven't seen Ms. Pearson, Avia Pearson. Are you on from Brookside?
Avia was not able to be on tonight. She had a work, yeah, a work call that came up, so unfortunately, she's not here. The rest of our board is on the call.
Very good. Welcome. I don't, I can't see who's speaking. I only have four cameras.
That was Nicole DiFilippo.
Hello, Nicole. It's great to hear from you.
How are you?
Good, good. Well, Nicole, thank you for being on. I appreciate you representing the Brookside PTSA, and we thank you so much for your partnership and everything that you've done to make Brookside such a special experience to students.
Thank you.
Well, send my best to your children.
I will. They miss you.
Very good. Thank you. Is Ellen and Miranda on from Crompond?
Hi, it's Ellen.
Hello.
Hello, hello, Ellen. Ellen, and thank you so much to you, your entire executive board. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have Miranda here with me. I believe that Jen Ramondo is also on here, our fabulous treasurer, that we'll be sad to see go this year. Just trying to stay active and keep positive things flowing. We've had a couple of things that we've been proud of this year in just trying to close out the end of the year with some nice ways to commemorate the fifth grade class in this unique environment. We're also trying to unify the fourth graders that will be incoming fifth graders next year with a gift as well this year, which is unique to what we normally do. But the teachers felt that it was a way to bring these kids back together. So hopefully, in the fall, when they all come back together, they'll have something the same that will unify them. So we're doing our best in these times to try and make things better and remain focused on the positive. And just want to thank you and the board and everybody for all that they've done to direct us in the right way as a district. Could not have been happier to land here 13 years ago. I would never would have expected there would be, but I couldn't imagine living anywhere else right now. And thank you for your guidance and stewardship.
That is so terrific here. Thank you so much. That means so much to us all as a collective. Thank you. Maria O'Connell, and it's so great to see you, middle school PTSA, also now incoming district PTSA president. Welcome, Maria. It's great to see you tonight. Thank you for all that you have done for our middle school.
Thank you, thank you. I am absolutely most proud to be a Yorktown resident these days. I've always loved Yorktown, but I really feel so proud to be part of a community that is keeping everyone informed and staying on the forefront of everything we do. So thank you for your guidance. I had a wonderful board that I got to work with these last few years. I am leaving the middle school, so my twins are graduating. But I want to thank my board and Ron Fideli, because that's what we do, we switch hats, is coming in to replace Ms. President. He's our president-elect. Kathy Imperato has been a wonderful vice president these last two years. We have Lisa Bukalo as our treasurer, Megan Whalen and Lori Kinsaga are our secretaries, and Trish Davis has been our delegate this year on the PTSA council. We had a really good year. I'm very proud of one thing we really implemented for the first time this year was brand-new band uniforms at the middle school level. So everyone had their own style shirts and T-shirts and collared shirts the last few years, but the PTA got together and got uniforms for band, chorus, and orchestra, and they are phenomenal. And we're very sad they didn't get to use them. But they have them. So the sixth and seventh graders are ready for next year, and the eighth graders have a nice souvenir. But we hope to keep it going and really have a great-looking music program dress-wise. They're already great sounding, but a great-looking dress-wise next year.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate everything that you've done for our schools, and we'll continue to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Finishing out our school building, PTSA is our high school, and Laura Lee Millhaven should be on this call as well, and I think I saw Gemma Ryankraut as well.
Yes, I'm right here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Great. I am less extemporaneous. I prepared a little thing to say, if that's all right.
Very good.
As Ron said, I'm Laura Lee Millhaven. I'm the president of the Yorktown High School PTSA. And this school year, I've had the privilege to work alongside president-elect Gemma Ryankraut, who's on the call, vice president Claudine Ranjolo, secretary Maria Roll, treasurer Kristin Severino, and our district PTA delegate Lisa Tomini, who I believe is also on the call. At YHS, we see the students as they're preparing to graduate from the wonderful YCSD community and transition to the next steps in their journeys towards their future goals. This year, we have continued to work closely with the YHS guidance department as well as teachers and administration to provide students and parents with a variety of resources to help them during this important but very confusing and often frustrating time feel much more manageable. At our meetings, we have informative speakers presenting valuable resources on topics such as financial aid, naviance, and college admissions processes. Throughout the year, we facilitate affordable and effective review classes for increased success on the SATs and ACTs. And we also fund and contribute to funding 20 scholarships and awards for our seniors, including YHS department and administrative awards, as well as district and PTA awards. And as somebody who has been in this district for, now my twins are graduating, so this is a culmination of so many wonderful years, we feel grateful and honored to be partnered with such an amazing and dedicated community of teachers, staff, administrators, and Board of Education members. Thank you for all you do for our students and families and our entire Yorktown community.
Thank you so much. And looking forward to a month-long celebration of our Class of 2020. I know you have two children in the Class of 2020, two wonderful children in the Class of 2020. And I'm looking forward to honoring our Class of 2020 as appropriately as these times will permit.
Thank you. And thank you for helping them and the entire class feel so very special during this difficult time.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Now, we will begin our more district-wide school partners. So I'll begin with SEPTA and Jamie Collins, Jessica Bynes, and Julie Marata, I believe I saw on the call. Welcome and thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Thanks for having us here. I think I speak for Julie and Jessica and myself that, you know, it really is an honor to be here with all of you, all the other dedicated parents and faculty in this district who really give all of themselves to represent the kids and be here for what matters, and that is the children. I do want to, I do want to note that this is the second year for SEPTA, or revival, or what we'll say. You know, I, well, first, let me thank Jessica and Julie and Christine Dunn. I believe Christine's on the call, too. I think I saw her name. Christine has been our delegate this year. Julie is our secretary and Jessica is the vice president. I can definitely say that without everybody's help this year, building-wide, all the different PTAs, the faculty PPS, without all of you guys behind us, supporting us, our endeavor probably would never have taken off. So, you know, thanks for dealing with all of my gripes, my requests, my emails, my bombardments to all of your PTA dispersments and your emails to your, you know, your communities inside those schools. But it's just been a real honor and a pleasure to work with all of you guys side by side. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all that you have done. The next group that I'd like to acknowledge is our Foundation for Excellence. Talk about a very interesting year for this group and for all of our groups. Chris Menical has been such a great friend and partner to our school district, and she has really just been such a champion of so much of the good work that's happening. So Chris, I see you on the call. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thanks, Dr. Hatter. I know Chris Dunn is also, Christine Dunn's also on the call. Christine was our VP this year, Missy Schluter, our treasurer, and Stacy Boylan, our secretary. We're always proud of the stuff that we do with the Foundation for Excellence, but I think in our camp, we were a little disappointed this year because we kind of got our legs chopped out from underneath us right before we were heading into our busy season when we make a majority of the funds that we do for the school district. So I think, you know, we made the effort, we made the decision, unfortunately, to halt the grants this year and just roll what the money that we did start the year off with into a banner 2020, 2021 year that we hope it will be, you know, for the FFE and for the district. We really are nothing without our volunteers. I know Dana's on the call, and there are a couple of other people who have popped in to help us. Jamie, us and SEPTA have really done a banner kind of camp night that we're hoping to really extend and make bigger in the community next year. It's interesting, you know, even with what's happening in the society, you know, it's, we have an awesome, small but mighty group of volunteers that bring a lot of different skill sets and work well together, and some from home and some in the events. And we like what we do, and we like supporting the teachers and the kids, and we're happy to be here. So thank you very much for the recognition. It helps. We don't do it for the recognition, but the recognition is nice.
Yeah. And we're so grateful to all that you do. You're a mighty group, and your moral compass always points at what's best for children, and I really admire that.
Thank you.
Representing the Huskers Club as president, Jay Boyer. I don't know if I saw Jay on this call. Maybe not. But Jay, if you can hear, if you're having technical difficulties with the microphone, you're welcome to chime in at any point when that time comes.
Hey, Dr. Hatter, if I could just make a comment that I forgot to make?
Of course.
Sorry. I meant to give a shout-out because I saw him on the call. An honorary FFE member would be Mr. David Leese, who the balloon night, balloon day would not happen without his expert digital and computer capabilities. So we're very, very happy to call him one of ours now. So Dave, thank you very much for all you do with us as well.
Very good.
Oh, my, Chris, thank you so much. And I feel part of your family, too. Thank you for everything and including us.
Very good. Next, we have three groups remaining that we'd like to acknowledge this evening. And the next group are the First Nighters, Shelby Graff and Gemma Ryankraut. I believe are on this call.
Hello.
Hi, Shelby. Thank you for everything that you do for our performing arts. You make such wonderful contributions for our students.
Oh, it's our pleasure. Yes, as you said, we have Gemma Ryankraut on here as well. She's our secretary. We also have Barry Carriello, who's working on membership with us. And I was trying to think of some of the highlights from this year. We, too, were sad that things were cut short, and we weren't able to have our annual banquet that honors the seniors. So we were trying to think of some ideas to highlight the seniors in a different way. So we did, we did dedicate some scholarships to the seniors, two per discipline. And we're also working with the photographer Bob Cassner. He photographed some of the student athletes, and we're doing the same thing with our student performers. We're traveling around town to their homes, and we're going to, or he's going to take some photographs to, as a memory of this time, and we'll highlight some of our performers on Twitter, hopefully, in the coming weeks.
Absolutely terrific. Thank you so much. What a nice way to honor our students. So thank you. I know that's a very time-consuming endeavor, and I appreciate the group taking that on. Next, from the Science Research Foundation is Shoba Viswanathan. I believe I saw.
Hi.
Hello, hello. Welcome. Thank you for all that you're doing. I know this has been a very atypical school year from the science research perspective, but thank you for your continued commitment and support.
Yeah, as many of the others have shared, we've all had our years cut off abruptly, and it's been a little hard to figure out how to proceed best. But I think there has been much that's been done that's good, and it's been a great program, and we are hopeful it will come back and continue strongly. And like the others have said, we've got a few senior awards going tomorrow to honor some of the seniors, and there's a symposium coming up. So there's a celebration of the program. And while some of the research is going to be handicapped this summer, I think people will find alternatives, and I'm very hopeful about how we proceed with this. I'll keep it really brief, but as a parent who has raised two children in the district, I also want to say, like Laura Lee, that thank you to every one of the people who have been part of my children's lives, and it's been an amazingly good school district for us. So this is a personal thank you to everyone who has crossed our paths and all the good things that's come out of YCSD for us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That is very kind to acknowledge that. We appreciate that. Finally, we'd like to acknowledge one of the great partners of our school district, and that's the Alliance for Safe Kids. They've done such tremendous work, not only for the Yorktown Central School District, but for the Yorktown community at large, and honestly, for the region. They've been such a resource and such a touchstone for so many in the community. And I'd like to welcome Liz Talbert, Stephanie Carbone, Karen Pravida, Trissy Kushner, Isabel Weissman, and Teresa Reinon Zavitch. So Liz, great, great to see you on this call. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our schools and for our community.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hatter, and to the board for recognizing ASK this evening. This is always such a special night because it affords us the opportunity to come together with all of our community partners that we are so, so very grateful for and rely on for their support and, you know, to help us with our mission to get the information out to all of our families about youth medical health and substance abuse prevention, as well as opportunities for thoughtful service. I know that typically, you know, when I'm here on this evening, I usually talk about a wonderful Save a Life that, you know, that ASK had hosted. But unfortunately, this year, we had to postpone Save a Life, as you all know, and it was to be our 10th annual, and we had wonderful presenters and workshops and volunteers all lined up to get to work. So I will say what I am most proud of is that as an organization and, you know, including all of our volunteers and the very supportive board that I have, we made a shift to virtual programming by the end of March. So we have actually, over the past three months, been very busy. We were able to put together a COVID-19 resource guide. We partnered with the town and again, the other sectors, and rely on everyone- and rely on everyone here this, you know, this evening to provide us with information to support that interactive guide and to distribute it. We've also been working tirelessly with volunteers, not just adults, but wonderful volunteers from Yorktown High School. They have helped us with the guide. They have helped us with, to kick off our webinar series. Because again, just to go back to Save a Life, we realized we had tools ready to go, but we had to rethink how we were going to share them. So these beautiful young minds really, you know, help us navigate the 21st century sometimes very, very well. And we've had virtual community service meetings with the students. We have been attending WISE presentations virtually. So we've really been able to do the best that we can to continue to engage with the community at large and with the Yorktown School District in particular. And we're just so, so very grateful again for the support that you have offered us and the willingness to allow us to work with you and share our information with your families.
Well, Liz, thank you, and Trissy, thank you so much for everything that you have done for our school district. As we celebrate volunteers, there's just another group that we'd be remiss if we didn't recognize. And Yorktown is so fortunate to have seven extremely talented people who so generously and graciously volunteer their time for the betterment of our school district and the betterment of our community, and that's our school board. There are so many things that you know about our Board of Education, especially if you watch Board of Education meetings. So certainly, they have their meetings, and they have their meetings between two and four hours every two weeks or so. They offer meaningful feedback, insight, set policy, adopt the budget and ask questions of the budget, really scrutinize the budget to make sure that there's a balance between what our students need and sensitivity to our taxpayers. But what you likely won't see are the hours and hours of policy committee meetings and fiscal advisory committee meetings and steering committee meetings and audit meetings and poring over voluminous reports of the financials of the district. They are so contributed, so dedicated, and they contribute so much to our school district that they really inspire me. You don't see the, all the time that it really takes to be a great school board. And great districts don't happen accidentally. They happen because there's a great school board that is setting smart policies and reasonable policies and being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and making some different strategic forward-thinking moves. We have a terrific, terrific Board of Education here in Yorktown, and they are a pleasure to work with. So to the members of our Board of Education, I thank you for your dedication and service to the district. And at this point, Jackie, I will turn my remarks, my remarks are concluded. I will turn the program back over to you.
Well, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for your kind words. We do it out of love for this district, just as every other volunteer and every other place in this district does it. You all love this district, and that's why it works so well, and we appreciate all you do. We know from our own work how many hours you actually put in, and it's not just the five minutes you go here. There's a lot of time, and it's only done out of love for a better community and for each other, and we really truly appreciate all of you. So we thank you all very much for everything you do as well. And thank you, Dr. Hatter. We couldn't do it also without a wonderful district administration. Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, Mr. Cole, so we thank everybody. All right. Want a background?
No, thank you.
Mine? Okay, so we're going to move on to the next part of our meeting. So I hope you all want to stay for the budget hearing, but if you don't, we'll see you later. So thank you very much. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Light opposed? We need a presentation on the 2021 budget. Is that going to be Tom?
Yes, I will turn it over to Tom to present that.
Where'd he go? Is he even on?
Is Tom muted?
I don't see him on the list. Did I lose him?
No, so I guess I'm presenting to you then. So you can have second best present.
Tom is on.
I see him. Where do you see Tom?
Well, that's quite all right. We can just move forward. So you bet you can continue scroll. Oh, Tom is on. He's having no microphone. Oh, there's no microphone for Tom. Okay, no worries. It happens, and we can certainly move forward. So this is the required publication of our school district budget. It's to be available the evening of the hearing. It will highlight all the salient points of the budget. It certainly recognizes, you bet you can scroll to the table of contents. So everything that is worthy of discussion in the budget, all the detail, the revenue, the three-part budget, the tax cap report card, the exemption impact and how that affects the taxes and revenues, those are all featured in this budget book. It is posted online on our website, www.yorktown.org/budget. So yorktown.org/budget. It's a pretty easy site to navigate to. All of the information is there. It speaks to our mission statement and our core beliefs, certainly. The letter from the Board of Education is the letter that you saw on the front of the newsletter, assuming everybody received the newsletter. And it goes through the important components. There's a sample of the ballot that will be received by mail this, this week is our expectation. There are three boards, I'm sorry, three candidates running for two seats on the board. So Anthony DeLisandro and Mike Mignani are incumbents, and they're running for reelection. And Elizabeth Anderson Scully will also appear, and then there's a, is also running for a seat. And then there's Proposition One, which speaks to the 2020, 2021 fiscal year revenues and the amount, you can scroll down too, so that everybody can see the ballot, the sample ballot, in the amount of $99,700,000, which is, but so that's the sample ballot. And then as you scroll through, and we're not going to go through in entire detail, you'll see the breakdown of the revenues, breakdown of expenditures, and the subsequent pages. And all ultimately coming to a, oh, if you can just scroll back up, yes, perfect, right there. All coming to a 1.55% budget-to-budget increase with an estimated tax rate increase in the town of Yorktown at 1.15%. And then a estimated tax rate decrease in the town of Newcastle at minus 3.33% and an estimated tax rate increase in the town of Cortland at 1.98%. And those are the key points to the budget book and the budget documents that Tom and his team have done a phenomenal job. And I've said this before, this has been one of the most challenging budgets to put together. I've been in central office, I've been in the central office team developing budgets. This is what, you're 10 or 11 at this point. This has been the most challenging to put together because of the many variables that were in play. Oh, Tom, are you on? So I don't know if I'm coming in sounding like a robot, but the others are sounding like robots. So no mic, that's fine. So this has been a challenging budget, and I thank Tom and his team for developing the budget. We had to pivot so many different times. We pivoted when the COVID, first we developed the budget, which requires a lot of scrutinization and a lot of analysis to understand the expenditures and that every penny is going to where it needs to go, which is to our students. Now, with regard to some of the changes that came forward, COVID came on. We recognized the economic climate, and we had to revisit the budget again, and then we thought it appropriate to revisit the budget again. Then there were reductions in state aid as a result of the COVID pandemic. So we're anticipating a 20% reduction in state aid. We're anticipating $300,000 to $400,000 reduction in county sales tax revenues. We're anticipating reductions in returns on our investments, and we're anticipating reductions in rents from French Hill. So certainly, we've saved some monies by having the schools close. So transportation, which is a double-edged sword because transportation aid is expense-driven. So we get 40 cents on every dollar back in the following school year. So if you don't spend it, you don't receive that back. So that's a double-edged sword. Well, you save money on transportation, you lose money the following year in revenue. So transportation, substitute costs, we certainly saved on. Fuel oil, we saved on because we were able to set our temperatures lower to a lower thermostat, so not heating the buildings during that end of March. Electric, we're certainly saving on. But when you look at the major reduction in revenue, the reality is there's still a substantial shortfall. And then when you look at the investments that we've made in PPE, I mean, we're paying $6 a mask. That's expensive. We're looking at some resources so we can safely reopen schools for our students that are going to be required and that we receive. So in the, we develop in the guidance that we receive. So that's where the thinking had to shift again, and we had to reallocate the monies that we do have available to those purposes. This has been such a complicated budget to craft and find again. I thank Tom, his team, I thank the board, Fiscal Advisory Committee, Mike Mignani, Anthony DeLisandro, Jackie Carbone, for really sitting at the table with us and really scrutinizing line by line, trying to figure out how we can put forth a budget that will get students what they need, but is respectful of our taxpayers at the same time. And I think we've achieved that in this budget. So I thank you all for your efforts. Jackie, I'll come back over to you. The audio, the audio seems a little echoey.
Arable, yeah.
Oh, is that Tom?
Yes, I finally got back online.
There he is.
Dr. Hatter, I just wanted to point out, not to retrace where you've been, but that the budget is fully compliant with the tax cap calculation.
Yeah.
In fact, it's $600,000 below that level.
That's, that's a very important point, and I thank you for bringing that up.
I have, there was some information I was hearing on social media over the weekend. I'm hoping maybe you can clear up. People were saying they don't understand if we were closed for three months, why we can't use those savings. Can you explain? There are no real savings. Although the buildings are physically closed, there were expenses that were still going on. Can you talk a little bit about that, Ron?
There were expenses that were still going on, but the reality is the shortfall that we're facing in revenue far surpasses any monies we were able to save through fuel, oil, through electricity usage, through substitute costs, because you're still expecting the operations to continue. The attorneys are still available. The medical director honestly was, his number was, I put his number ahead of my wife on speed dial on medical director during this time. We were on the phone constantly, so those contracts are still paid. The school lunch program, that had to continue. So we were serving, and we still are serving, children meals in the free and reduced price lunch program. There were some anticipated expenditures that came up. So yes, we saved money, but this budget vote, this mail-in ballot budget vote, we're not complaining about it. We certainly understand it, but that's a $35,000 expenditure that we didn't have in our calculus for developing the budget one calendar year ago as we were going through this process. So those are the kind of unanticipated. So yes, we were able to save some monies, but the reduction in revenue and the unanticipated expenditures, I don't think anyone could have forecasted we would go to a 15,000 absentee ballot system overnight. And those are expenditures that have certainly deteriorated any savings that we would have realized. Also childcare. Childcare for first responders and emergency workers, essential personnel, yes. We've been providing that service as well, and that's again, part of the governor's executive order. And we have certainly complied with that.
And Dr. Hatter, we do expect, we're anticipating that our state aid in the current operating year, 2019, 2020, may well be cut based on the governor's anticipated review of revenues towards the end of June.
But we may not even be whole at the end of this year.
No, we don't. We expect that our state aid will take a hit this year. So any monies that we have accumulated in the current year, we expect to have to fill a hole in revenue with that from the state. And as Dr. Hatter mentioned, we anticipate having our state aid cut next year too, based on the quarterly results of revenue collection from the state government.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So this might be something that Tom can answer. So one of the things that I also was seeing in the community, and maybe just Tom can help clarify it. Is it possible, so say we save money on our heating oil, to take that oil money and apply it towards some other expenditure we have that we know that we have that we've lost those funds for, or even possibly a $20 rebate in the community? Is it something that's even possible to do under, under the state guidelines?
Well, it's a very good question. Each year is an individual event, it's a 12-month period. So monies that you would save, say on heating oil, you can use for other expenditures in that year, which we have done, by the way, to a certain degree in the current operating year. So for instance, are the cost of this budget vote that we're having with the absentee ballots all in is about $90,000. Historically, it's usually less than $20,000. The money we're using to pay for this comes from areas where we have not had 100% of expenditures, transportation or fuel oil, things of that nature. The, the Board of Education is giving back, when you talk about refunds to the community, Board of Education is giving back over $3 million in this budget. That's what that application of the fund balance is. So the monies that we have in reserve, the cash that we have in reserve is being given back to the community in the form of lower tax rates and lower, the lower budget as well. A million dollars worth of reserves is being used to offset increases in the pension system costs as well. So $2.5 million of revenue and another $1 million of cost relief is included in this next-year budget, and that in itself is a rebate to taxpayers.
Any other board members have any questions? No. I'm going to open it up to public comment. If anybody is wishing to speak, you need to identify yourself, and we're going to have a two-minute limit on the questions if anybody wishes to speak. No? That's it then? We good? All right then, can I have a motion to close the public hearing for the budget? All those in favor? All right, we're going to go on to board action items. I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting calendar for the 2021 school year. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A resolved, on recommendation of the superintendent, the board sets the 2021 organizational meeting for Monday, July 6, 2020, at 6:00 PM by virtual meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have two appointments. We have a change in salary, extra duty, and rescind in teaching stipends. Under classified personnel, we have a volunteer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business office, a motion to rescind the resolution approved by the Board of Education at its March 9, 2020 board meeting, authorizing, placing a capital construction project proposition before the voters at the annual meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the vendor agreement with Bob Kastner. Kastner Photography effective June 1 through August 15, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to declare the following musical instruments as surplus materials. These instruments are damaged and beyond repair.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this is a law. A motion to rescind the elections resolutions, B, C, D, F, that were approved by the Board of Education at its March 9, 2020 board meeting. They're listed below.
Second.
Discussion, I just want everybody to know, it's because we can no longer hold the meeting in person, so we have to rescind this so we can have another motion afterwards. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, be it resolved, since the Governor's Executive Order 2022.26 requires the conduct of the annual school district's budget vote and election on June 9, 2020 be through the use of absentee ballots only, the Board of Education hereby appoints the following individuals for the Yorktown Central School District to serve as election inspectors. The election inspectors shall canvass the absentee ballots at the Mildred Street Middle School Cafeteria at 5:00 PM at the rate of $13 an hour. The poll workers are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? Can I have a motion to arrange the following special ed placements as of June 1, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? A motion to accept the following gifts, grants and donations with gratitude at the Yorktown High School, $16 from New York Life, Your Cause Employee Match Program and the YH Athletics, $250 from the Caryello family for the Peta Caryello Scholarship Fund and $1,000 from the Barb, Bob Sarrow Foundation Scholarship for the baseball scholarship.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? We're up to board comment. And Mike?
I mean, nothing really other than, you know, a shout out again to the administration for all their hard work on the budget process and getting us to this point. There have been a number of hurdles and a lot of challenges and they'll continue to pop up along the way. But I think as a whole, our organization has done an excellent job in addressing everything as it comes up. So thank you for that. And thank you to all of the wonderful participants today, all those outside of organizations who are part of our community and do so much to support our students. Thank you very much.
Lisa?
Yeah, so I just echo Mike's sentiments for our community partners. Some are the names I've known for many, many years. Some are new, but the sentiments are all exactly the same. Thank you for everything you do for our community. We wouldn't be Yorktown without you guys. So thanks for everything. And you, Dr. Hatter and Tom and Lisa O'Shea, thanks for putting on a dime throughout this entire process and getting it ready for our community to hear the budget and vote on it. And with all the struggles with the ballots, I know we're not unique, but it feels like we are. And thanks for getting it done. And we're good for this, all of us together. So thank you.
Pete?
Just again, I'll echo with Mike and Lisa said, but I don't think I could add anything that they haven't said already, but thank you to all.
Rashme?
I'm good. I think Mike, Lisa, Pete have covered everything. So thank you, everyone.
Cheryl?
Just wanted to thank Dr. Hatter for hosting our school partner recognition night, such an important night tonight to celebrate all the good things that have happened. Our school partners haven't gone, gone without challenges either during this time, yet their tireless efforts have moved us forward. So I really, we really do appreciate it. We've, probably most of us have worked in different roles in their organizations and we know how difficult and how hours it takes to, to put on all the events that they do. And I also wanted to thank our administration for working through not only COVID, but a budget for a very challenging time. So thank you to our own administration.
Anthony? Anthony? I don't know if Anthony can hear us.
He was still having audio problems. He can't hear.
Okay, all right. I also want to thank our district clerk, Yvette. We've had tremendous challenges with our printer getting our ballots. She has been on the phone. She has been a bulldog and I don't think we would have even been at the post office today if it hadn't been for her efforts. She was truly amazing. And if you ever want to have somebody have your back, she's the one, I'm going to tell you. She was truly, truly amazing and I thank her for her hard, hard work. She's incredible. Ron, Lisa, Tom, you know, we love you. We think you're awesome and we are so proud of this budget. In trying times, you are still trying to move this district forward. And so we truly appreciate that as well. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything?
If I, if I could, Jackie.
Sure.
I just want to do my own personal thank you to all of our community partners. As Lisa Roll said, some of you I've known for many, many years and some of you more recently, but I'm always amazed and humbled by the amount of time you put in to help our students and our faculty in our schools. Your dedication is so astounding to me and I just wanted to share my thanks because part of the reason why I love working in Yorktown is because of the community support. So thank you very much.
Agreed. Um, we good? Anybody from the public wishing to speak? No? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I opposed? All right. Good night, everybody. Make sure you find your ballots in the mail and return them. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.